Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the Board Meeting of the Cedar Falls Board of Education. With that, I would like to read a statement of public hearing. I have in my possession an affidavit of publication showing the notice of time, place, and hearing for the 2018 deed of dedication and final plat for the McMinn Hill First Edition Project. This notice was published in the Waterloo-Cedar Falls Courier on September 12, 2018. The Board will now hold a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment? If so, please step up to the mic.
I would just remind everybody that this is for Aldrich Elementary. It's for the final plat to set back some of the other legal requirements to ensure those 40 acres meet the requirements as outlined by Iowa Code.
All right. Hearing none, I will close this hearing. Moving on now to the approval of the September 10 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item D on the agenda, the presentation of the counts payable. I did review the bills and move for their approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion? Sorry, a motion. A motion from Suzie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Eric Giddens. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now moving on to the approval of the fiscal 2018 Treasurers reconciliation report, and Doug Nesker will do that for us this evening.
Our Treasurer Dan Lynch was unable to be with us this evening due to a last-minute scheduling conflict, and so he got to put up with me for the Treasurers report. And so if we can pop that up on the screen. I split the Treasurers report into two parts to hopefully make it a little bit easier for everybody to read, as well as myself. And you can see that the top half, this is the checking account and investment balances as of June 30, 2016. I won't go ahead and read through all of them, but you can see that total dollars available with all the funds that the school district has and all the investments that we have for all those different funds totaled $36,486,255.73. If you want to go to the second screen, now you'll see the Secretary's balance for those funds, and you can see that they totaled $36,149.151, and then there were outstanding checks, which typically happens at the end of every month, jet payable deposits that are basically in float to the district, federal and state taxes that need to be paid out, and then deposits that are also in transit. Those totaled $337,244.22, so you can see that the Secretary's balance ties to the number up above at $36,486,255.73.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal 2018 Treasurers reconciliation report?
So moved.
It's been moved by Jeff Haseman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Suzie Hines. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Do I have a motion to adjourn the retiring board?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Haseman. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Jenny Leeper. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
So I think it's important at this time just to kind of talk through what we've done. I think everybody on the Board obviously knows this, but for individuals in our community, Iowa Code requires an organizational meeting every year. That was a little bit more streamlined when we actually had elections every year than the organizational meeting typically meant the retiring board stepped aside, then the new board members who were just newly elected came onto the board. Obviously, this is a non-election year per Iowa Code from two years ago. So we still go through the retiring board, the old business of the retiring board, and then we call together what's called the new board through the organizational meeting, which is what we'll do next.
Okay, and it would be my honor to call this organizational board meeting together, and the first thing that we need to do is determine a quorum. And so I will read off everybody's name, and if you please state it to your present for the record. Mrs. Coyle.
Present.
Mr. Giddens.
Present.
Mr. Haseman.
Present.
Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mrs. Leeper.
Present.
Mr. Orvis.
Present.
And Mrs. Wolpert.
Present.
Obviously, all seven board members are here, so we have a quorum, and now we can proceed with the election of a board president. In front of you, you should have, each of you should have, we'll go with the blue ballots first. One ballot indicates that it is a nomination ballot, and then the second ballot is actual voting ballot. So what I need you to do is I need you to fill out the blue nomination ballot, and please fill out who you would like to nominate for board president, and then I do need each of you to sign the ballot and then turn it in.
Oh, did I just do the wrong one?
No, it was the one with all the names on it, all the names.
All the names?
Yes.
Yeah.
I have counted all seven nominating ballots, and we have unanimous nomination for Mrs. Coyle to continue as board president. If it's okay with the Board, we would suspend with the formal passing of ballots, and I would ask for a motion to approve for Mrs. Coyle's nomination as president.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Mrs. Coyle as president for the 2018-19 school year. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Mrs. Coyle, would you please stand? Raise your right hand, because I'm tethered here. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of office of board president in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And I will turn the mantle over to you.
Thank you. Thank you all. All right, now we, you take your green one, and we are electing the vice president. So if you can fill that ballot out and then pass-
And I would remind everybody, this is the ballot, this is the nominating document that you'll want to fill out first for nominating somebody for vice president.
It's not this one?
This one. You have to nominate first, and then we vote.
This one says I nominate.
You're showing us the wrong one.
I am very sure.
Okay.
But this has cast one vote between the two candidates, place of nomination.
This is what I need you to, okay. No, you can do what you did, that's fine. We'll make it work. Turn it in. We'll make it work. We'll make it work.
I'm sticking with what I did first.
You just need one of the green ones.
Just make sure that the record, you know.
It's just unanimous, we don't have to, you know.
You know, I'm just an old man, what can I say? Okay, we have all seven nomination ballots received, and it's unanimous for Mr. Haseman to continue as vice president of the Board. I would recommend that you suspend the formal voting and somebody offer up a motion.
So moved.
And then a second, please?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to have Mr. Haseman continue as vice president. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Mr. Haseman, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of board vice president in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law?
I will.
Item G on the agenda, the appoint the treasurer. We will table this and do that at our next board meeting. Item H on the agenda is adopt the written policies, rules, and regulations and procedures. Do I have a motion to approve the adoption?
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education adopt the policies, rules, regulations, and procedures that govern the organization under Iowa Code 279.8.
Thank you, Suzie. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to item I, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Jenny Leeper. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Eric Giddens. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Yeah, just maybe you can clarify, for some people it might be confusing why we're doing a contract with the state of Minnesota when we're in Cedar Falls, Iowa.
Yes, that is unique, actually, and this is due to a situation where we have a student with some special needs. Actually, there's only one school that can meet those needs in the state of Iowa, which is in the far southwest corner of the state of Iowa. The school through Minnesota allows us to be able to provide that education much more closer to home, even though, as you can see in the contract, there's some residential services included with that. But due to the proximity of the home, we had to go through a very specialized process to work with the State Department of Education to grant approval for that, to make sure that this was in the best interest of the family and the student, which they agreed and wanted. So it is unique. We've never had this before. It takes special requirements and special processes to get it into place, but it is a contract for services specifically geared towards these specific needs of the child.
Do we get additional funding or waiting from the state for that, because that was-
We don't get additional waiting, but we just get the normal waiting that you would and funding that you would for a student. Actually, this is not only closer and better for the child and the family, it's actually less expensive than the other placement in the state of Iowa, so just because of the proximity and where that's located at.
Good questions.
Very good questions.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on now to public comment. We have not been contacted.
They're not, no.
Good, all right. Moving on now to the Secretary's financial report.
Okay, my turn again, and if we can get those popped up on the screen. I will start off with the general fund, as we normally do. You can see our revenue for the month was $952,000, with expenses of just over $5 million for an ending balance of $2,989,799. As you can see, that's a little bit better than where we were one year ago at this time, and typically revenue for the month of August is pretty slim, because we do not receive any state aid until September and very little, if any, property tax. A lot of what you're seeing there are open enrollment and special ed tuition dollars that are, we invoice other school districts for, and that's the majority of the revenue for that month. If we want to move on to the management fund now, basically, interest was the revenue for the month, and expenditures were pretty short, just under $7,400, so an ending fund balance of $485,047. Capital projects fund, again, the revenue for the month was just all interest and expenditures for the both Aldrich-Norseeder and Orchard Hill projects, $2.417 million for an ending fund balance of $4,688,312.53. Statewide one cent local option sales tax, you can see revenue for the month, we did receive a one-month payment this time. The state had been kind of bouncing around a little bit on two payments one month, one payment the next. For this month, it was for one month. Expenditures out, you can see, a lot of the expenditures out, the $40,000, are associated with, we're beginning to do a little bit of payments out of Fund 33 for the Norseeder and Orchard Hill projects, as well as transfers out to Fund 40, and that's a combination of sinking fund dollars and the remaining amount of money that the school district owes for the property that we purchased for the new high school. And so that's why that number's a little bit larger than normal. And so you can see our ending balance is $8,721,306 rounded, and I just note that on the bottom right, that unrestricted is $7.726 million, but we will start using that balance in earnest here, starting in about December, as we'll be running out of capital, or Capital Projects Fund $31. So, and that's as per plan, that's, we anticipated we would run out of those dollars about December, so that's right on cue, and we'll be going into Fund 33 to finish up both Orchard Hill and Norseeder. Physical plant and equipment levy, fairly quiet for the month. On the revenue side, $13,648, and as you can see, the $570,793 for different projects that are taking place throughout the district over the summer, ending balance of $3,110,128.53. Debt service levy, you can see revenue consists of interest of $441, and then there's that transfer in from Fund 33. No expenditures, the first expenditures you'll see in the debt service levy will be in December, so we have an ending balance of $758,557. Student activity, $87,114 in, $58,379 out. That's pretty typical revenue expenditure balance for the month of August, as things start getting banked up for the new school year, and our ending balance of $549,971. Trust and agency accounts, $20,707 in, $29,481 out, ending balance of $246,026. Food service and enterprise fund, as parents are starting to put deposit money in their accounts for their students' meals, so you can see that was $91,771, then startup costs for the new school year, $72,799 for an ending balance of $845,572. There's the coffee shop, very, very small activity, as they're just getting started for the new school year, and then the River Hills Consortium, we did have one payment roll in in August, and then you can see all the expenditures out, and that $1.45 was the balance from the previous month, and then we will have $80,082.60, which will be expended here in September. And with that, I'd entertain any questions that the Board might have.
Any questions for Doug regarding the Secretary's financial report? Hearing none, then we'll place this on file for audit. Thank you, Doug. Moving on now to communications. Marika Yang, would you please come up to the mic?
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So at the high school, we've been working on homecoming festivities, and just completed the hallways for the grade hallway competitions, where each grade level decorates a hallway based on the homecoming theme, which this year is game over. The hallways look amazing with CF Spirit and game over themed decorations all over. The winner for these will be announced at a later date. Homecoming Court is announced tomorrow in an assembly, and Friday, there will be a new homecoming edition this year of a pep assembly. There will be fun activities and lots of school spirit, which is really exciting, and the homecoming dance is this coming Saturday at Orchard Hill Church.
Thank you, Marika. Any questions? Okay, have a fun rest of your week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, yes. We had some great things that have happened the past couple weeks in the district, and the first one that we're going to talk about real quick is the signing ceremony we had for the partnership with the CF Caps and the UNI Center for Business Growth and Innovation. This was held up at UNI, and it was a great opportunity for the Caps program to express how awesome this partnership is going to be, but then also to have the College of Business and the university there to show their support, and it was also unveiling their Spark Zone that I didn't want to say it incorrectly, but it was their business incubator that they unveiled at that time as well. So this shows the official signing there at the business incubator, so that was very exciting. We also had the Aldrich ribbon cutting and open house last week, which was very well attended. We had great attendance of community members, parents, family, as well as many of the purple coats that were there to actually see the ribbon cutting that was then able to be done by the students, right there in the front row, and then the students actually were the ones that gave the tours the whole evening. So we had a really great time, was able to really showcase the facility that we think is really top-notch for our district. This, want to do a quick thanks to the Cedar Falls Historical Society. They've helped put together these two panels that will be on display in Aldrich that really expresses the reasoning why the building was named Best Trader Aldrich Elementary, so we really appreciate them spending the time to be able to showcase the historical significance that we have for naming the building. And you can also actually watch from beginning to end, within three minutes, the construction of Aldrich Elementary. We took photos from the groundbreaking until the first day of school, and it's posted on the district YouTube channel, so it's, and if you especially watch it in fast-forward mode, it's even more entertaining. Just wanted to mention real quick, the last board meeting, Jim McCombe and Sue Green talked about the tree planting, and that's actually been rescheduled to this Thursday, so we just wanted to let the community be aware of that. The students will still be planting those trees, but it's just going to be this Thursday due to the weather. Wanted to do a real quick mention again for everyone to please vote for Cedar Falls High School and the Imagine the Amazing campaign that Unity Point Health is putting on. Winning school will win $25,000 to enhance the well-being of students, teachers, and the learning environments. And just wanted to mention, the Cedar Falls Student Food Drive will run October 2nd through November 2nd. There's lots of events that they will be announcing and be asking for community involvement, and this is, this year is once again going to be in honor of Scott Lawrence Richards, who was a teacher at the high school for many years. Again, there's the district social media and our building social media. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Janelle?
I would just add that if you are interested in volunteering for the tree planting, I think they might have lost some volunteers who are going to be tree mentors, because it was going to be tomorrow, so if you're able to participate and attend, Sue Green is the contact, and it's suegreenbikes@gmail.com.
Thank you, Sasha. Thank you, Janelle. All right. Under to set a public hearing, item M on the agenda, we need to set a public hearing for the sale of property to the city of Cedar Falls. Do I?
We have just a brief little slide to be able to show about the West First Street reconstruction.
This is, as you can see on the map, as you can see, West First Street, and then the administrative building is toward the bottom. It's not actually on the screen, but you can see the blue area is the area that the city of Cedar Falls wishes to purchase from the school district. It's approximately eight feet in width, and then the brown, or the tan area right below it is a temporary easement that they will need during the construction process.
It would be, you know, the recommendation of administration that we sell this eight-foot parcel of land to the city for a dollar. We've always had great working relationships, and that's what's been done, as we've tried to swap land or trade land for various reasons, for various easements, for other purposes. Tonight, simply setting the public hearing for the disposition of the land, and knowing that West First Street is going to be under construction coming up next summer, I believe, next spring, next summer, and certainly they're doing all their due diligence to acquire the land necessary to reconstruct that site.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to set the public hearing?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education set October 8th, 2018, at 5:30 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the sale of a portion of property located at 1002 West First Street, Cedar Falls, Iowa, to the city of Cedar Falls.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Suzie Hines. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item N on the agenda is to set a public hearing for the sale of a structure at 2426 Hawthorne Street in Cedar Falls, Iowa.
We don't necessarily have a slide for this one, but as the Board will recall, we recently were the benefactors of a generous donation by an anonymous party for that property at that address, and it would be the district's intent to sell just the structure off of the property, and in order to do that by Iowa Code, we need to go through the public hearing process. We haven't had a whole lot of luck with this in the past, in that the last few homes that we've acquired, we've tried to sell, and we've never had anybody bid on the project. So we'll kind of see where this goes, but in order to sell the property even for $1, we need to hold a public hearing, because it is considered real property, even though it's just the structures on the lot, not the lot itself.
Okay.
And I think it's important to note that this was a gift, again, as Mr. Nesker said to the district, a very generous gift. We know that the property was listed roughly for around $190,000. Both the anonymous donor of the property, as well as the previous owners, knew that our intent was to be able to try to sell the home, because the property is going to be transitioned into green space for Cedar Heights, just because of the need for additional green spaces, playground spaces, and those things. So our intent is, hopefully, somebody will purchase the house, be able to lift the house and move the house, but again, as Doug said, we have to go through the process to be able to go through the public hearing, be able to post that, and then to be able to advertise that and hopefully sell it.
All right. Do I have a motion to set the public hearing?
I move that Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education set October 8th, 2018, at 5:30 PM as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the sale of structure located at 2426 Hawthorne Street, Cedar Falls, Iowa.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Jeff Orvis. Any questions or comments?
Again, it would be remiss without saying thank you to our anonymous donors. What a generous gift to the district, and certainly something that's going to pay dividends for multiple generations and multiple students across Cedar Falls, especially for Cedar Heights Elementary Neighborhood, so we just can't thank them enough for doing that.
Most definitely. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Approval of the substantial completion of the high school portable relocation project.
And you do have that in front of you in your board packet, but I was remiss and did not bring that PowerPoint along, so the folks in the audience will just have to kind of bear with us. We're talking about the final project for the moving of the portable from Southdale Elementary to the high school. A total project cost with the two contractors, Cook Construction, and also with movers, with the design budget and other miscellaneous expenses, was $204,178. Actual dollars expended was $179,020, so the project came in $25,158 under budget. That's a little bit of a misnomer, because we did have a $25,000 general allowance within the project to Cook Construction for any miscellaneous items that pop up, so if you would have taken out that allowance, we actually came in $158 under budget, and with that, we would recommend acceptance of the project.
Do I have a motion?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board-
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education accept as complete the high school portable relocation project. All claims for materials furnished, labor performed, and/or services provided on this contract must be filed within the next 30 days.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Jenny Leeper. Any questions or comments?
Doug, every time we move one of these, it never ceases to amaze me how much it costs, how much we have to sink in. And this is, I mean, money that we never get back. You know, I mean, it's, next time we move it. Can you just explain again why it's so expensive to move a portable? I mean, why it costs, you know, nearly $180,000 to...
Certainly. It really boils down to a couple of things. One, we need to follow building code as established by the city of Cedar Falls. And one of the things that they require is that a unit like this, even though we call it a portable per se, it is, we do have to have foundations and footings that go down to frost, just like you would a home or anything else. And so that's part of it. The second part of it is this unit is connected. It has bathrooms or restrooms in it. So there's the utility costs associated not only to bring electricity to the building, but also to bring water and sewer to the site and data. And then last part of it is because the portable typically sits up in the air, the front door is typically in that two to three feet above the ground range for air, we have to make sure that it's handicap accessible so that anybody that has a disability can enter the building. And that would be the third reason why it is as expensive as it is in order to put these units in. If there is an advantage to all of this, with our growing enrollment, as we have needs, we can kind of move things around. But overall, you are correct. Every time that we move one of these, in this case, it's $179,000 that we won't get back.
And another, I think, aspect that is worth noting, this is an area that is air-conditioned. So actually, it's a room that staff and/or kids don't necessarily are argumentative about going into, especially during the hot and humid fall that we've had. So it's one of the small benefits because our current high school is on-air condition in many sections of the building, and very humid and hot in many sections of the building. The portable is aired. It's not ideal. It's not a great situation. But due to growth, it's one of those aspects that we are in the position to have to have to serve our kids.
And of course, another major disadvantage is students have to leave the building to get to the portable. And so you've got traffic at the end of every period moving back and forth between the building and this unit.
And we still have several portables that are at, for example, Orchard, that will remain there until the construction is complete, right?
Correct. The plan with the portable units at Orchard is that they will stay there for the remainder of this school year. And the plan would be to move those out to a yet-to-be-determined location this next summer, as Orchard Hill will no longer need those units next school year. We also have two units currently at North Cedar. We're using them, of course, in conjunction with the construction projects taking on there. The intent would be that those units would be removed from North Cedar as well next summer, weather permitting. And so as North Cedar will not need those units either. Again, those units will be placed at a location to be determined.
So we have how many at Orchard?
We have three at Orchard, four classrooms, one unit is a double classroom unit, and two singles. One of those units at Orchard may not be able to be moved. We're checking into that now. It was installed quite a number of years ago, well before my time with the district, and it was actually stick-built on-site instead of it being manufactured at another plant and brought in. And so we're having the mover look at that to see if that unit is even movable. But the other two are, and the two at North Cedar are as well, as they were just moved there last year.
The district will keep those portable buildings for some future use potentially? Or can they be sold to make some money back after these construction projects are completed?
The units can be sold, yes. That's the unit that we currently are talking about here. We just purchased it three years ago, and we made the decision at that time to purchase the unit versus leasing it because we knew that if we were going to need it past two years, which we anticipated we would with the growing enrollment throughout the district, we actually are now saving dollars versus leasing that unit long-term. So that's helping us with the budget that way. But yes, those units are, would be able to be sold. They are typically in demand, not high demand necessarily, but it always seems like some growing school district is in a pinch for classroom space every year, and we would be able to do that. So there's a little bit of a residual asset value to those units should we not need them anymore. I can tell you that the one unit at North Cedar is very, very small. We may or may not have a use for that. It might make a great ice fishing shed. It's not much larger than that. But, so it may have some use. We do have some anticipated crunch for space in our secondary building, so we may have to look at that. Administration's sort of reviewing all of that now to make some final determinations.
We are in that great position of having enrollment growth, but also some challenges as we look at some of our secondary spaces. So I think as we go throughout the year and continue to watch to see where some of our growth occurs and future growth occurs, because we know that's kind of cyclical around certain times when people tend to move, we'll have a better understanding potentially about November and when we need to place those at different locations across the district because we don't have the space.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor of approval of the substantial completion of the high school portable relocation project signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on now to item P on the agenda, the 2018-2019 Board of Education Goals.
Yes, so the board goals are in everybody's packet. We also have a presentation to go through and talk a little bit about the framework for goals. Just so everybody recalls and knows this information, it was either last meeting or the meeting before, we set up a committee. We go through and make recommendations on goals. And we always follow the framework that we have throughout our district. So you can see there's three areas that we focus in on across every group entity that builds goals in our system. Those three areas are academic and student learning. We know that is a critical component of what we do, our collaborative culture and our PLC framework, and then finally, culture and climate, and looking at how do we make sure we enhance that culture and climate aspect. And as I said, this goal framework includes all of our board goals, the superintendent goals, our building goals, department-level goals, grade-level goals, individual goals that set goals, because we want everybody focusing in on the same aspect. They look different between buildings. They look different between grade levels. But all areas build their goals in those three areas, which we know are critical for our success as well as our students' success. So when we talk about board goals and the recommended goals, the next slide shows that's kind of goal number one, student achievement. And we have a couple subsets of aspects underneath this goal. Number one, study and implement, create a plan for a referendum for a new Cedar Falls High School. We put that down underneath student achievement, knowing how important this is for our students as well as our community as a whole. But that's something that needs to be explored and accomplished as we look forward. We will continue to focus on that deeper understanding and knowledge of the newly implemented K-12 computer science sequencing that we're doing. We're very excited about that. This past year, we had several sequences in 7-12. We're going to continue to expand that to move down into K-6 with some code.org activities, training, professional development, and certainly want the board to be knowledgeable and understanding of that process and what that looks like. This is a goal that we've talked about for several years. We've tried to refine it within the committee to create a process to set benchmarking and delineate data to be collected as far as what success means for our graduates, and how do we continue to define what that means, short-term and long-term. We have down creating opportunities to visit new high school buildings to explore, A, utilization of space that's unique for enrichment-type programming or other opportunities that may be out there, how to look at and view collaborative spaces to enhance learning environments. I think several of our elementary buildings have done that. But how do we do that at the secondary level to ensure we're focused on the right learning enhancements for our students, our staff, and our community? And then finally, what have other districts done to enhance that safety and security that is within the building structure so it enhances the learning environment? And certainly by visiting buildings, other districts, not only across Iowa, but potentially around the Twin Cities or down around some other larger urban environments, we can see what they have done. And then finally, continue to focus on best practices, learn about student grading and enhancing our learning-based grading, magnet schools, project-based learning, et cetera, not only throughout the year, but also following the Iowa Association of School Boards Annual Conference, which is always a good time, excuse me, to reflect and to collectively talk about what we've learned and some of those best practices. Goal number two area, and again, I'll just go through these, and we can ask questions and have some discussion. Culture and climate, the committee talked about, again, modeling learning. We talked about, instead of focusing just on one book this year, potentially going through language of design, some different aspects to be able to hear about what other districts have done nationally, internationally, about design for collaboration for deeper student learning. Talk a little bit more with some article review and some research on best practices in grading and what that looks like for grading, and certainly as we talk what our learning-based grading looks like or standards reference grading looks like. And then finally, talking about just that environment relationship to learning. There's a lot of research now that's out there that talks about the environment for natural light, the environment for having kind of maintenance of air quality within buildings. Even heating and cooling of buildings has a significant impact on overall student learning, staff enjoyment, and utilization of spaces. So want to bring a lot of those components in, especially as we build on goal number one, which was talking about the framework for learning environments and certainly a new high school. I think this is one that we've had for several, or at least a year, to talk about a joint meeting with Cedar Falls City Council and see a few board directors, just to talk about different components of our city, the growth, the areas that we focus in on. I've talked to several of these entities within each of these organizations. We have great working relationships, but also know that this is important to share, just where we're at and where we see the future of Cedar Falls going into the future. And then trying to continue to model learning and have different parent universities or current up close to talk about what does it mean to be a school board member, the roles and responsibilities, talking about FAQs with a new high school and the referendum process. And this was a great discussion in the committee, looking maybe in December to have recent graduates talk just about the impact of the Cedar Falls community schools that has had on them as they look not only short-term at their future, but long-term at their success of raising a family and the impact that the district has had on them. Finally, goal area number three, which is the third area, is PLC, collaborative process, collaborative team, building that collaborative environment. We have down three areas that we've really looked at in the past. The third area is a little bit more expansive of that goal area. But go out, reach out, work with our PTO, PTAs, and attend each of those throughout the year at each of our now ten attendance centers. We have worked to try to set up a joint meeting, again, secondary, with Pete Holmes and the high school to have that done on one timeframe. Visit buildings during the school day, during PLC time, during staff training time, just to see the great work that's going on throughout our district. We say this quite often, we have the best staff in the world, and it's always nice to see them in action with the work that they're doing with kids, not only throughout the day, but also during those collaborative team times, because it's really, really impressive, the level of dialogue, detail, and focus on student learning and growth that occurs during those times. Then finally, when appropriate, observe professional development within our district. Try to get some of those components out to school board members, trying to do a better job to get that in front of you so you know when those are, to take advantage of those, because it's really amazing, the work that's going on, especially as we open some of those up to even professors at UNI and some other aspects. And we've had really good feedback on that. So a lot of information there. The committee not only met and reviewed all these, we worked through an ongoing Google Doc to make enhancements and/or changes to these. And I think we feel pretty comfortable with these being presented tonight for the full board.
Questions or comments or suggestions?
I would mention, kind of tying back to what we were saying about portables, they're obviously not ideal, and safety is one of the key concerns that we have for our students. And I'm sure our administration has done a good job of addressing some of those concerns. But we'd obviously much rather have them in literally a brick-and-mortar building to keep them a little bit safer. And the entrance and exit situation at Cedar Falls High School is definitely something that we'd like to address and improve.
Exactly. And we've worked to address that, you know, short-term with staff and which doors are open and not open. But safety and security is such a significant aspect, as we all know, just watching news on a weekly, daily, monthly basis. And right now, just because of our exterior classrooms that we have, not only the portable, but other annexes that are currently at the high school, the way that the building's set up, and just the inefficiency of the hallway trying to get from one side of the building to the other side of the building, we have kids that go outside. And that's a huge concern and a huge challenge for us with multiple entry points. Very good point. And I think trying to look at how other new secondary buildings have tried to manage that with new structures, new construction, I think is going to be crucial to see how they've accomplished that by a single point of entry, or maybe dual points of entry during the day, but only one's accessible to public. I think it's important to be able to review that so the full board can see what's possible, how that can be accomplished, and what that looks like.
Any other comments, questions, additions, suggestions?
Thank you for the committee's work. This takes a lot of time. You know, we meet typically for an hour to two hours, and reviewing online and commenting through the Google Doc to refine and make much better. So again, thank you for that.
All right, no questions, comments, or additions. Do I have a motion to approve the board goals?
So moved?
It's been moved by Mr. Hasman. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Sasha Walpart. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Just a clarification. We have printed on our agenda every week or every meeting a box, you know, that has board goals on it. But it's, am I right, that it's kind of a distilled version of the goals that we just voted, are about to vote on? I just wanted to be clear about the connection between what we're voting on right now and what shows up on our agenda every...
Yeah, so the bottom of the agenda actually is last year's goals because they have not been approved yet. We didn't refine the box of goals that are down at the bottom. But those will be updated for the next board meeting. So it is refined, but these will, this will say different things based on the approval of these goals, even though the framework are the same with student achievement, PLCs, and culture, climate. Some of the focus is different than what we had last year.
And Eric, if you see it next week on the agenda, or in two weeks on the agenda, and you think it needs to be tweaked somehow, you know, talk about it. Because maybe what I'm getting, I think you talked about it with Carrie, you know, how they look at it and how we see it, since they're our goals, or how we perceive it, might be different. So don't be afraid to say something about it next week if you feel like, or two weeks if it needs to be tweaked.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to the superintendent's goals.
Yep. And again, same framework as we've had in the past with the superintendent goals. And we have a short presentation with these as well, continuation of the previous presentation. Again, we focus on a student achievement, culture, climate, PLC expansion with the superintendent goals. We had a committee meeting to focus on these as well, to look at not only enhancing opportunities in our district, but trying to focus on holistically the goals that we have across our district and certainly in different buildings. Because again, we want everything pointing in the right direction, the same direction, as we look towards short-term and long-term attainment of goals. So the first areas you'll see is student achievement, several different bullet points underneath this one. Number one, we are working to expand the computer science opportunities. That is going to be really neat with what I think that's going to become as we continue to finalize that and ensure that it spirals on top of one another year to year. So a student in third grade, the following year in fourth grade will continue to refine and add additional skills around our essential skills that we set out in computer science and coding. Second is to continue to enhance the CAPS experiences and programs. the CAPS experiences and program, looking at additional strands, deeper partnerships. We know we've grown CAPS in roughly five semesters from 13 students. This year, up to about 155 students. We want to continue to expand those opportunities for students. We know how important that project-based experience is, but also that hands-on learning experience in business and industry is crucial for students in, not only today, but well into the future. We've got some additional refinements, some work to do on our learning-based grading, grading. We want to make sure that we continue to focus in what are our core essential learning standards that all students have to have in order to show skill attainment as they look towards graduation. Those conversations are continuing, but what does that look like? What does that mean? What does that report out to? And as we report out with the great majority of our secondary courses and classes here coming up at the end of the semester. And then really looking at those deeper learning opportunities and exploration. We're excited about, you know, as we now have refined some of our standards and through our learning-based grading, what does that look like now as we continue to focus on more personalized learning? There's some aspects with Iowa Code recently that talks about online learning. What does that look like? As we continue to make those shifts to focus on 24/7 learning instead of maybe just accompanying the Carnegie units, and that's exciting. And also, project or magnet school exploration or options with that, something that we've had some internal discussions about, but focus certainly into the future. There's some great models of that across the state of Iowa that are happening, but certainly across the Midwest, the country, the world. Second area, just as it was with our board goals, PLC areas. For my collaborative learning, my collaborative approach as a superintendent, looking at best practices, I'm involved with several statewide organizations, several statewide groups, trying to be engaged with not only my learning, but hopefully adding value across the state, working with our administrative council on certain aspects of leadership and culture and change process, several different things. When I work with all of our building principals and some of our directors, we're focused this year on digging deeper into student-centered coaching, professional development, as well as working directly with some of our instructional coaches on student and staff impact, and doing several things with article reflection and looking at, again, researching some of those best practices, trying to share some of those things with the board as we look at not only learning-based grading, but also some of those other aspects with what are those programmatic components that are crucial, that we know can have strong impact on students, not only locally, statewide, nationally, but internationally. And then finally, working and doing some of my own professional learning, reading and going through a book study, learning or leading student-centered coaching, as well as attending a conference to further education and leadership for my own learning. Third area is culture and climate. Again, we place culture and climate in this one, finalization of creation of the new high school facility planning, working on a framework to allow for a successful bond referendum. We're looking at that June 19 timeframe, really trying to focus and enhance my engagement with different social media and showcasing the work that's ongoing in our buildings. You know, we have great technology, and again, the things that happen day to day, minute to minute, classroom to classroom across our district is simply amazing, and trying to showcase that I think is extremely important, but also trying to share that out then with our community, trying to do some parent universities to further some of that knowledge and awareness, partners in education development, something that I just recently reached out to some other leaders within our community to talk about maybe a mayor's program or another joint program that we can sit down and show three key public entities, the city, the school, and Cedar Falls Utility, doing a joint program about the great things that are happening in Cedar Falls, the low tax rates that we have, because we're one of the lowest of the largest 2025 cities in the state, to talk about the growth that's occurring across the community and how that positively impacts overall levy rates, and then just talk about the collaboration that's occurring between all the entities, to focus on the right work for the future with strategic planning. And all the entities are on board with that, and now it's just a matter of looking at dates and times, because I think that's very important to talk about, that we do work closely together, and it really makes a big difference across our community as a whole. So again, kind of goes back to that culture and climate, understanding some of those big-picture aspects for everybody within the Cedar Falls Community School District and within our city.
Okay, questions, comments, or suggestions regarding the superintendent's goals?
I feel so bad, because there's so many neat things that are happening, to kind of summarize that in such a short area, but hopefully you understand, it's just so neat to talk about, to be able to put that down on paper.
I would just have a comment with, since we have some, you know, still relatively newer board members on our board, and even for us as veteran members, we have our goals and we set them, and we really, I think we work on them all year, but we really don't have specific time that we sit on to kind of revisit where we're at. I think that would be helpful if we could somehow work that in on a regular basis, just maybe a touchstone of saying, you know, where are we at with this goal? We've had some in years past that we've meant to get to, and other work has taken precedence, which is understandable and fine, but I think it would be helpful for all of us to make sure that we're staying on track and we're, you know, if we need to tweak our goals, I think we are probably welcome to do that during the year if we feel that, you know, we need to change direction or something. So I just wonder, you know, for the board's consideration, if that would be something that might be of interest.
Now, he will, Dr. Patty will put these in a SMART goal format, and usually in the SMART goal format, there are dates in there that he attaches to the goals. So he will, once those are approved, he will do that so that we can see those. And then, I don't, I agree with you, Jenny, then also, you know how we come back for the mid-year and just, that's kind of a test, but maybe there needs to be, you know, a couple months from now to take a look at it again. So I think that's a great suggestion.
And I think even just for the public, if we had a meeting where we could revisit those, that way if people only catch two board meetings, and it's today and six months from now, you know, it might be a good opportunity for them to realize the work we're doing and how we're making progress on those goals, so.
Great suggestion. Yep.
Any other questions or suggestions regarding Dr. Patty's goals? Thank you to both committees for the board goals and superintendent goals. Do I have a motion to approve Dr. Patty's goals?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Giddens. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Susie Hines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The goals are approved. Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report.
Yeah, just a couple different items. Next board meeting, October 8th, we'll have our certifying and report, our CAR. Also, at that time, we'll do our board committee assignments. October 22nd, the informational report at that, the following board meeting will be the Iowa assessments and an update on those. Just a reminder, the Iowa Association of School Boards State Convention is November 14th through the 16th. There was a Google forum, Google Doc that went out today to start looking at which sessions, I think everybody, at least today or maybe this weekend, received from the Iowa Association of School Boards, just the pamphlet of different sessions that they have, so the Google Doc aligns with those different sessions. So if you could fill that out, then we'll get all the registration taken care of and all the different accommodations taken care of. Then finally, I just want to remind everybody that we did have the board presentation last meeting about the tree planting. Just important to note that that was moved from scheduled tomorrow because of potential rain in the forecast to this upcoming Thursday. And as Sasha said, we would love for anybody to volunteer, can contact Sue Green and kind of be a tree mentor, and I know our students are extremely excited about going out and taking advantage of that community service opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Dr. Patty? Questions, comments, or concerns from board members?
I just wanted to offer a quick update. I attended a short while ago the Legislative Resolution Committee meeting with the Iowa Association of School Boards, and we talked about the results of the priorities that rose from all of the districts and determined where we were going to make the cutoff in terms of percentages. So the ones that rose all the way to the top, the SAVE extension was the one that got the most response, and that was at 83% of all districts. Want that to be a priority, which I think says something about, you know, the way our districts feel in the state. Mental health was the second highest at 56.63%. Supplemental state aid came in third at 48%, almost 49%, and then school funding policy came in at 48%. And then from there, it dropped off to 24%. So we decided that those top four will be the priorities that will go forward. I think that there's going to be an official notice of that sent out, and obviously, all of the other priorities will still be present, but those will be the ones that will receive the big push. In addition, we got to hear from the two gubernatorial candidates on their thoughts on a variety of these issues, and there are videos of those responses on the Iowa Association of School Boards website. I just went in and Googled gubernatorial candidates, and then it brought them all up. They're organized according to topics, like how they feel about vouchers, or how they feel about mental health, or the SAVE extension, et cetera. So you can watch those and see what they have to say. That's all.
Thank you, Sasha. Janelle, I'm wondering, would we be able to put up link to those, maybe those YouTube videos on our website, which would be...
Under the board materials?
Yeah, under our, under our board materials.
Definitely.
That would make it easier for people to access, maybe. So...
I think there were, what, eight to 10 different topics that they've covered. Each one's about two to three minutes in length for the response time, and they're really interesting, just to dig deeper into some of these individual platforms or thoughts. So always good to be informed and understand where the candidates are at within some of those platforms that we know are important to us as a school district school board.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Sasha.
Along the lines, posting on the website, what about the email, the district email newsletter that goes out? Is that, would that be an appropriate place as well to include a link? Sorry?
Yeah, to put in as a link.
Yeah.
Well, we could do that.
Yeah, easily. You know, our challenge is not to advocate for an individual stance or a candidate, except the ones that we've agreed to as a board that are platforms that we believe. So I think passing along information that shows the answers from both candidates is very positive. We want people to make wise decisions and choices, and certainly that's a good platform to push that out through. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Now, we are going to adjourn this meeting, and then we are going to call the meeting back to order as a work session, because we, the board did a self-evaluation, so we're going to sit down and just have a work session to go over the information that we received and gleaned off of, just the information from, and that'll take probably, I don't know, 30 minutes or give or take. But anyway, we're going to go out, and then we're going to come right back in, maybe with just a couple-minute break. So just wanted you to be aware of what we put in place. So now, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Giddens. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Susie Hines. All in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Do we need a minute?